All right, Joe. John. Greg. Jim. Alex. Justin. Jen. Absent. I'm here. Mike. Julie. Is not here. Peter. And Mary. Thank you.
All right. First item on the agenda is Prevention Council Survey. Emma Johnson, Jim McDonough?
I think I know most people. Is this okay? But I'm Jim McDonough. I'm a teacher here at Shippensburg. And I'm also the chairperson of the Prevention Council of Bridgewater, Roxbury and Washington. And tonight, we wanted to talk to you about a survey that we're implementing at Shippensburg Valley School at the end of March. So first of all, just if you don't know what the Prevention Council is, we're a group of individuals who work to combat the effects of addiction on our community. We've been around for 20 years. At least that. Dave Peters has been on the committee for 20 years. It may have been before him. So we have membership, including parents, teachers, nurses, emergency responders, clergy, school counselors, law enforcement, selectmen and prevention specialists. And we focus on awareness, education and prevention. How many people have ever heard about the Prevention Council? I know I can't really talk to you, but just a quick show of hands. Okay. Some have, some haven't? Okay. Some things that we've done in the recent past is we host speaker forums. Most recently, in the Roxbury Town Hall, it was a full house where we had a bunch of folks who were coming at the opioid addiction crisis from different angles. Law enforcement treatment specialists, people who are recovering addicts, to sort of talk about, you know, their situation. We've sponsored speakers. If you remember, Chris Heron was here two years ago now. And he gave two workshops. One was for our students. And the other was for parents. We implemented, last year, we implemented a one-region-one-book read with a book called Beautiful Boy. And we purchased and disseminated over 200 books throughout the, for free, throughout the region. And the caveat was, once you read it, you have to pass it on to somebody else. So I'm sure we reached more than 200 people. And we also pay for the coach buses to help ensure a safe prom night for Region 12 students. So if you didn't know who to thank for that, you can thank us. It's been a great service, I think. So what we want to do is, at the end of March, we're going to implement a CEREC survey. And it's a survey created here in Connecticut. Has anyone ever heard of a search survey? If you work in another district or have friends in another district. SEARCH is a national organization. CEREC is from eastern Connecticut. And basically, since 2006, they've surveyed 50,000 students, grades seven to 12, in 30 school districts in Connecticut, mostly on the eastern side of the state. But, you know, they don't discriminate. So in this survey that students will be taking, there'll be 46 questions addressing attitudes, perceptions and behaviors towards substance use, problem gambling, mental health indicators and risk and protective factors. It'll be, it's been developed from the Governor's Prevention Initiative for Youth that was started back in 2000. So it's a real Connecticut-based survey. Like I say, other surveys are sort of national and broader in scope, but we decided to go with the hometown team. Why do we need this? Well, first and foremost, it's a needs assessment. Like I say, I'm on the Prevention Council and we have great people on there. And we do some great efforts, but we don't have real data to back up where we're putting our efforts. We go where we think there's a need. But this will actually help us assess where there is an actual need. And from that, we can have data-driven prevention programming. So we can focus on the areas that need focusing on in our region. We also hope to share this with the Shippensburg Counseling Department to support their efforts with especially the social-emotional learning that Mike Boucher is doing. With this data, we can also apply for grants to support our efforts, either through the state with DMS or through the US, the federal government SAMSHA. And I know specifically, in the past year, we were eligible for a grant that would have given us a paid coordinator to help run our Prevention Council. Right now, we're all volunteers and, as you know, that has its challenges. We weren't in the running for the grant, basically because we didn't have any data to support the need for that counselor. There was no data at all because we've never done this survey. In addition, this will be used to support Western Connecticut Coalition's efforts. Western Connecticut Coalition is the umbrella organization under which we operate. We're a local prevention council. But pretty much every council that you have ever heard of, whether it's in Newtown or Woodbury or Smart, which is Southbury and Middlebury acting responsibly together, they all fall under the auspices of Western Connecticut Coalition. So to help with their efforts, to help them help us, this data is pretty important. So. How will it work? One month before the implementation, a letter informing parents will be sent home. The letter will contain a link to the survey for parents to peruse. Hard copies will also be available. And actually, I have hard copies for you folks to take a look at. So with this, if parents object to any of the questions or the survey in general, they have the choice to opt their student out. And typically, there is a small percentage of parents who say they, for one reason or another, they would rather not have their student take the survey. During an advisory at the end of March, students in grade eight through 11 will be given the link to fill out the survey. It goes to a survey monkey. So it's nothing that the school actually has any sort of access to. The link goes straight from their computers to the survey monkey. Students take the survey there and then it goes back to CEREC, where they do all the data collection. And then in one to two months, we'll receive the raw data and an executive summary. And then after that, probably in the fall, when we sort of sift through the data and the summary, it'll be posted on the Shippensburg Valley School website. And then the raw data will be shared with Superintendent Bennett and she'll disseminate it to appropriate parties. Any questions? Jim? Well, let me just say, there's a typical range of sort of rollouts. I know in New Milford, they just had the entire community invited to a big public forum in the gymnasium where parents were invited. And, you know, we didn't feel that was appropriate in terms of, because this is our first data point. And so it would be information without a context. So we just thought, especially for this first year, that we would just share that executive summary. And it pretty much sort of obviously summarizes the trends or the concerns or, you know, the accolades in the report. So. And also, just to introduce, I have Emma Johnson here. She's a Shippensburg parent, but she also works for McCall's Behavioral Health Center. She's a prevention specialist. Just in case there are any logistical type of questions, because Emma's guided school districts through these surveys. So. John?
Jim, I'm assuming that these surveys will go out to the Ag parents from the sending towns?
Yeah, I would believe so.
Because I can imagine there's a concern about sending their students to a, not a strange environment, but a different environment.
Right.
This would be appreciated, I believe.
Yep. Exactly. And I'd be willing to bet that in there, just because of knowledge of the sending schools, they're familiar with what, with this type of survey. Because I know Bethel, New Fairfield, New Milford, Danbury do, if not the CEREC survey, they do a much broader survey, the SEARCH survey. Yes?
I'm just wondering about the anonymity of the survey. I think that it would definitely improve the validity of the data. And so I applaud you for that. I think that's wonderful. You're really going to get an honest, if the kids know that it's anonymous, they're going to be more honest about some very sensitive topics. But I'm also wondering about the opportunity to kind of capture kids in crisis, kids who are thinking about suicide. You know, the cover of NEA Magazine just talked about how one in six high school students is thinking about suicide. So it's a real crisis. I'm not sure if this survey is meant to capture that or if this is part of a suite of plans that you have in mind.
So that's a really good question. And really, with this first year of CEREC, it's really getting a baseline. So you, whatever you have based on that finding, you would be able to now get some more indicated services for those populations specifically. However that might look down the road is really up to the region. But for, you know, preliminary purposes, that might look like, okay, a certain percentage of the student population reports suicidality. What do we need to do to immunize the student population as a whole? So it really, A, gives a baseline and then B, gives some really good universal strategies for something like suicidality.
So you would see this as the first step?
Absolutely.
And hopefully, there, with some of the more serious topics, that there would be some follow-up?
Yes, absolutely.
Greg? Michael, can I ask you a follow-up question on that? Do you believe that's the situation here? One in six is thinking of suicide?
That's a national statistic. That's definitely not necessarily applicable to every single high school. I'd like to think that it's less, but I'm not so naive as to think that we've never had any kids have suicidal thoughts or even take it to the extreme.
Well, the idea is good to do the survey.
I agree with Mike. I don't think it's one in six, but I think it's absolutely more prevalent than we would like to admit, especially in our own school.
Other questions? Jim?
I guess, do you need a motion? I'll make a motion on being, that the Prevention Council representatives be authorized to send out this survey to our students.
Moving seconded, discussion. Has everyone had a?
Students who are VoAG students who are coming in. Are you saying these surveys, you'll send them to their towns to send them to the students first?
No. They'll take it in the advisory with all the other students. All the Ag STEM students have an advisory.
Okay.
So, yep, they'll be treated just like all the students.
This is about Shippensburg students. And I think that's why, when we're looking at it, talking about them in totality, not about a reflection of their community, but a reflection of our community. And what do we have to do? And really, for us, taking a look and having some feedback, you know, finding out now that cigarette smoking has almost all but gone away, but now the amping of vaping. So it becomes very important that we are being responsive to what is happening in our community versus taking something that was historically an issue. And again, this is about what's happening at Shippensburg.
Megan, could I just ask a quick follow-up question on, since we were talking about advisory? True that the agri-science students are not segregated into their own specific advisories? They're integrated within advisories across Shippensburg? Is that true? Spread out within the population? Good. Integrated, yeah. Fantastic.
Yeah, there's a motion pending on the floor and we're wondering if there's any discussion. Has everyone had a chance to read through these surveys? And you've looked at all the, you know, you've looked at the questions? You understand what it is you're presenting to the students for review? I just wanted to make sure. I mean, I read, I read through the whole thing, but I just wanted to make sure. All right? Anything further? Yes?
For students to take? It'll be an online survey. Well, we won't have, we won't have any access to student responses, particular student responses. It's a survey monkey that just goes, like any other survey monkey that you fill out, it's going to go to CEREC. They're going to take the raw data. And, you know, I don't, I don't know if they would or, you know, there's no anonymity breach between the administration of our school and the kids.
Okay. Anything further? Look, there's a motion on the floor to authorize its distribution to our students in Region 12. Does anyone have, all those in favor? Opposed? Staining? It's unanimous.
Great.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for all your work, too, as always.
All right, at this point, we have, we'll look, see if there's any public comment on matters on the agendas. Seeing none, we'll move on to our consent agenda. Is there anything on the consent agenda anyone wants to take off the consent agenda? And what's on there are meeting minutes for the last two meetings, January 6th and December 18th of last year. All right? The consent agenda will remain and those will be adopted. It's time for my report. I had the privilege to attend the Washington Gives event in the Depot on Monday last week. And boy, did our Shippensburg students make us proud. They were terrific, absolutely terrific. They shared their senior project vision and processes. There were a lot of projects dedicated to direct assistance and what have you. And it's really exciting to see them up there. And they're extremely, you know, well-versed in their project. Really presented themselves well and it was very impressive to the audience. And I will say that one community member mentioned that our students gave them hope for the future. And I think that's pretty much the run of the day. So it was a wonderful, a wonderful thing that Washington did at the, at Judy Black. And they did a wonderful job there. The sheep and alpaca have arrived on campus. And if you haven't driven around the back to take a look, they are cute, I'll say that. Two of our sheeps had their lambs this week. So that's, our sheep population has gone from four to six. And we have one more pregnant ewe that appears may be giving birth to multiple lambs. So we'll be interested to see that. Yeah, really. Certainly got ones that are, that are productive. I'm told that our students will have the ability to name the new arrivals. But we might want to find out what the ultimate destination of them is. Last Sunday, the CIAC celebrated Scott Workhoven as Assistant Soccer Coach of the Year. And we do, we do, we do celebrate and congratulate Scott on that. Shippensburg was the only school that needed two tables because we had so many supporters there of Scott. So I think that's a wonderful tribute to Scott. This was Sunday, and where was it? In, at the? Aqua Turf, right. Yeah. Okay, the class of, if you've got your mail this week, you saw the Class of 2019 publication. And every home in Bridgewater, Roxbury and Washington received a copy of the booklet. I'm hoping that soon, we might be having to send these out to some homes outside of our region. The information in the mailer included accomplishments of the class and we've received a lot of positive feedback regarding the issue. And I think that's, once again, a wonderful publication. And I think these things are well-received in our communities. So that's more or less my report for this month. I'm going to turn it over to the superintendent for hers.
Well, good evening. We have a lot of things to celebrate. And as Greg shared, it really is, between these two meetings has just been an absolute celebration of life here on campus, as well as some really good accolades. I also want to make certain, and I give a special thank you to Roxbury resident Jane Benson, who actually donated to our teachers, our first grade teachers, a two-year professional development training for first grade teachers and reading specialists. This training will allow our teachers to learn more about the development of reading. And actually, Teresa's going to talk about that later in the program. But to say that this was something that was donated to us. And it's really not, I mean, monetarily, it's wonderful. But actually, what it's going to do for each class of students in order to make certain that we are supporting our readers is just outstanding. Additionally, our Model UN Conference is going to be taking place this weekend, from January 30th to February 2nd. This year's delegation is the biggest that we've had come out of Shippensburg. We are sending 24 students to Harvard. We are representing South Africa on the Security Council. It should be noted, I can tell you, Chris Dennis, who is the advisor. First of all, I started getting emails from him this weekend about the weather. He's watching the reports already. But additionally, even thinking about the coronavirus. And this is an international conference. And he called Harvard and they actually, number one, China's not selling, sending a delegation right now due to travel restrictions. But he was absolutely looking at the care of our students. And I think that's one of those, to be thinking that much ahead in safety, I think only goes to talk about his character and how much he cares for our students. So I have to tell you, I feel very good about our kids going to Harvard with that kind of support. Additionally, we had the Connecticut Scholastic Art Awards Competition. And from over 3,000 submissions, seven Shippensburg students were chosen to have their work exhibited. I think we have a couple people that's near and dear to their hearts. But Adriana Burrell, she received a Gold Key for Best in Painting Scholarship Award. Grace Kontu for her Gold Key photograph. Sidney Vidal for her Gold Key photograph. Julia Sinatra for her Gold Key painting. Kyle Mikowski for his Silver Key drawing. Lane Faison for his Silver Key photograph. And Maya Messina for her Silver Key drawing. And so again, another feather in the hat of our Shippensburg art program. So feeling awfully proud. And we will display those pictures after, but I think they were also in the packet. And really, just seeing the talent, it's outstanding. For our athletics, our girls' basketball team is currently nine and three. They are in second place. We are one game behind Nanawog. Friday's big home game is against Northwestern, who we are currently tied for second place. So this is an intense game. So hopefully, we can all go out and celebrate our Shippensburg female Spartans. Additionally, our Shippensburg boys' basketball team is currently seven and three. On Friday night, the boys will travel to Winstead, where they will be playing Northwestern. Our swim team holds a 3-3 record. And they will be at our pool against Womago on Tuesday. And they have a couple upcoming competitions. On February 29th, the Girls Splash Classic. And that is the biggest all-girl swim meet for the winter season. So we're looking forward to continued success. Additionally, indoor track team will be competing at Bacon Academy for the Last Chance Meet. Well, that sounds kind of ominous. But this will be happening on Saturday at the Floyd Little Center in New Haven. This is their, one of their final opportunities to qualify for our track athletes. And our ice hockey team. We're not going to talk about their record, but they are playing Newington tonight. So we hope that, we wish them luck on the ice. Our Spartans skaters will return home on February 3rd. We will be playing against New Milford at the Gunnery Rink. And we have to thank our cheerleaders, who absolutely are creating that positive atmosphere at all of our home games. Their partnership and collaboration with the pep band, I think, has injected school spirit. And those are things in which I say, we're getting bigger crowds, we're getting noisy, and I think that's really okay. Other things that we get to celebrate right now, I want to thank the Shippensburg PTO and Eversource. The PTO secured a grant for our VEX robotics equipment from Eversource. And this is a true partnership of the towns, the schools and a private company to improve our educational experience. We are seeking grants on a regular basis for our agri-science program. We actually were awarded a $7,500 grant through the Perkins Grant. And that's where we worked in a consortium. So we are chasing down the grants to make certain that we are going to enhance everything we are doing, that if it can't come out of our FFNE, we're finding the funding in order to make certain we really are creating a dynamic program. On Thursday evening, I will be in Roxbury. We're going to be talking to the Booth Free families about creating a multi-age school. I have heard feedback that people are concerned that the motivation to change Booth Free is financially motivated. And other rumors have been that this is our attempt to consolidate. I want to make certain that I dispel the rumors. I actually sent home an email to the parents, letting them know that this is not true. And, you know, sometimes when rumors get going before we've had the conversation, it can create some fear versus us talking about how we have the ability to have a truly educationally dynamic program and what we can do to energize Booth. And so I think an attention on Roxbury, doing something that will really energize the school is needed, wanted, and we're going to see what we can do. That's going to be exciting. So again, that will be on Thursday evening. I know that I'm going to be joined by Lisa, Justin and Greg in their backyard. So we look forward to the conversation as it comes up. So. So just a couple other things that we have going on. Notification, we have a field trip to New York. Oh goodness, the Respetario Español. Yep, we're going to do that one on April 1st. That is for our grade 11 Spanish students. So looking forward to that. Additionally, for personnel, we have the appointment of Rachel Benier. She will be the Educational Assistant at WPS. This position opened up because the, we had a resignation. And so we were able to fill this. And Rachel brings to us her experience as a world traveler and just a really dynamic background. We do have a leave of absence coming up. Emily Rue, a special education teacher at Booth Free, will be taking her maternity leave. We already have our long-term sub lined up, so we are ready to go. And we'll make certain that that transition is as smooth as possible for our students at Booth Free. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Megan. We'll now have the treasurer's report. John?
Yes. Next week, tentatively, on the Tuesday, the 4th, Megan, Nicole and I will be meeting with the Bridgewater, Roxbury and Washington for a selectman, for a financial discussion and to inform them that approximately $430,000 will be returned to the towns from the remaining funds that were in the 2018, 2019 school budget. This is good news in that the budget ended in blue ink. However, it is a reminder for everyone who is involved in preparing the budget, future budgets, that we should strive for greater accuracy, as $430,000 was 2% of that budget. Also, the 2018, 2019 budget was drafted under Dr. Cosentino and Bob Geeson. So, you know, just keep in mind that money is going back to the towns, but 4% is a little excessive in authoring a budget. As to this quarter's budget report, unfortunately, seven of, well, not unfortunately, but seven of the funds, mostly the 100 salary line items, are currently in negative territory after considering encumbrances. However, the 100 line items are predictable. So most of the overages, or two of the overages, were in line item 110 Administration and 121 Non-Certified Directors. These salary increases were negotiated after the budget was finalized. So, you know, thus, you know, again, after encumbrances are considered, they are in negative, not by very much, but... The quarterly report, if you'd like to see it, is on the website. You have to go to the business office and under the, scroll down to the, to the link, that you'll be able to either see the budgets and/or the quarterly report. I spent about two hours on, yesterday, wading through the numbers of the quarterly report and the annual budget. And after I got into it, I'm saying, some of these numbers don't jive. But I realized that the budgets that are posted on the website are the proposed budgets, not the approved budgets. So maybe we can work on... So maybe we can work on amending the, you know, the line items that were changed prior to the referendum. So you can get a more accurate view of the numbers actually lining up. And...
Mike, do you have a question? John, excuse me, Mike has a question.
If you're done, I don't want to interrupt you.
Nope, that's about it.
So I had two questions, John, for you. The $420,000 that we returned, could you give us a little historical context for that? Is that a historic high? Is that low? Is that somewhere in the middle?
That's pretty high. It's pretty high.
Can I interject for a moment, though, John? Because part of that $280,000 that the board said if the riding rink was not going to be, so we had to uncover that amount. If we're not going to spend beyond our contingency, we had to hold the 280. So because right now, we're under budget and we're within the contingency, we don't have to dip into that 280. But once you have that money encumbered for, I can't spend it on anything different. Nicole, if there's anything you want to interject as well?
Just more on the encumbrance. So that encumbrance, we won't make the decision to return that to the towns until June 30th, once we're comfortable that the building project doesn't need it. So the amount that's going back to the towns, once the board approves the audit, is $158,000, split between the three towns. The 430 includes the 280.
All right. And then, John, when you were talking a little bit about that amount, you mentioned that it was about 4%. And based on your comments, it's, you seem to be indicating that this was a bad thing for us to be returning money to the towns? Could you just explain your thinking there?
No, with that, again, with that riding rink getting added back in, and, excuse me, I didn't realize that that was the case. I thought it was excess from the budget alone. But I'm just saying, now, I'm going to rethink that statement because if it was only $150,000 plus, we really didn't overshoot the target by that much.
Okay.
But I think historically, I know, I think, just off of my memory, I think $60,000, somewhere in the neighborhood of $60,000 was returned last year to the town, or when Bob was still here. So...
So then, John, just to, again, give us a little bit of context, what would be the ideal as far as you're concerned? Would the ideal be that we return zero to the towns? The idea that we have $100,000 or $150,000?
Yeah, a zero balance in the budget. I don't know. I mean, I think somewhere in the neighborhood of 1% might be a little bit more rational.
Okay. And if we bring it down, if that figure comes down to the 150 without the riding rink encumbrance, would that be about 1%?
Yeah.
Less, yeah.
Good, thank you.
Jim?
Well, I was just going to say, I was going to ask... John, I was going to ask you about this. Even if it was 430, that was 4% off. I mean, you want, it's like your social security. How much, you know, can you take out so that there's no tax return? You know, no tax refund. Make it perfect, which is what Mike was asking. My thought is that the superintendent, in preparing a budget, should have some flexibility in a 20-odd million dollar budget to be off by 430, forgetting about the 280, which you didn't know about. It's a lot, but it's, you know, I think the person needs to have discretion when putting the budget together. There's a lot going into it. To have it cut to 1%, you want it within 1%. I think that's asking a lot. I don't think, I don't know if that's giving enough flexibility.
Well, I'm just saying, yeah. Again, if you consider, you know, presenting the budget, and, you know, in reality, the budget was, you know, actually 1% higher than it needed to be, that might make a difference at referendum. That's all I'm saying.
I understand.
Just that taxpayers consider, you know...
You would like it to be as close as possible. You would like it to be as good as you can get. But I think the superintendent needs some flexibility preparing her budget, or preparing their budget.
Just to Jim's point, too, when we're talking about the budget, I would think that the towns would be very pleased about monies that were returned to them. So I'm not seeing it as a real negative from the towns' perspectives.
If I may?
Jim, go ahead.
Really, the towns would like to have taken from them, you know, a past budget, as little money as possible. If we could cut it close, they would appreciate that, if it hadn't been $430,000 over, let's say. So I can see getting it as close as possible, but I still, what I'm trying to say is, I think, the flexibility that's needed.
Mary, your microphone, please.
Oh, there it is. Does that include money for the non-recurring capital expense account? Yes.
No, it shouldn't. That's returned.
Nicole just said yes.
Are you asking if we transferred money into the non-recurring?
No, this is, the amount, the $158,000, that would be after the money was put into the capital non-recurring.
The 2018-2019 non-recurring 1% fund has already been put in. That money is already taken care of.
Okay.
And I think that did end at 1, exactly 1%, correct?
We transferred 1%, correct?
Well, I have a question about that. You know, there was a statute that was passed that, and it kind of got messed up. But the statute was passed that changed that from 1% to 2%. Unfortunately, when they passed the statute, they amended only the statute that impacts municipal boards of education. And they forgot to amend the statute that affects regional boards of education. Now, that's, there's a proposed bill right now in the legislature that would change that. So if that bill gets enacted in the current session, and it's enacted in the manner that I mentioned to several representatives at the Legislative Breakfast at Sandy Hook School in Newtown, I suggested that they make sure that amendment reflects this as an error, as a clerical error, a scrivener's error, in the preparation of the statute. Because if they do that, it makes it retroactive. And if they make it retroactive to this year, then we would be able to set aside 2%. So before you promise the 153, we might want to think about whether or not we might want to put the rest of that back into the budget.
They can't for the 1819. We could do it, so the 1819 is done.
Oh, this is 1819? Okay, that's right. I keep forgetting you're talking about 1819. Never mind, I'm sorry, had the wrong budget year in mind. But in the future, we may be dealing with 2% set aside, which I think would be good. It'd be particularly good for us, and it'd be good for the towns, because we'd have more set aside and less need of recourse to referenda to cover our capital expenditures, if we could set aside that 2%. But in any event, yeah, as long as your budget is sufficiently large to leave 2% left over. Okay, good. Any further comments on that? All right, I'm going to move on to committee reports. Mary, CAAB?
I haven't gone to anything for CAAB in a while, but I did get tonight from Megan. I got the CAAB's Day on the Hill, and I do plan to go to that. It sounds exciting. Will I be bringing students with me?
Yes, you will.
Well, that'll be really good. And I will do my best to get them to see any of our legislatures that happen to be there.
Okay, good. Alex, Finance and Operations. Oh, I'm sorry, excuse me, Mike, I missed you. Curriculum and Educational Programming.
That's because you must have known I had nothing to report.
Right on top of that, thank you. Now, Alex, Finance and Operations.
There we go. Well, as you may remember, we had a snowstorm and we missed our last meeting, so, two ago. So we just had our last meeting, which ended at 7:01 tonight. So we don't have a lot to report. We have decided to add an additional meeting next Monday at 4:30, to try and cover some of the issues that we could not cover within an hour today. And you have our agenda in your packet, and that is what's going to be covered today and a week from today. And that's really all I have to report.
Thank you, Alex. Jim, Labor Negotiations.
The board has, before tonight, an executive session and perhaps action on the Chapag Valley Educators Association Agreement. I've also been informed that we're going to start negotiating with the Nurses Union, although I haven't received any notice of any definite schedule yet that's going to be starting.
Okay. Good enough. We have, normally would have a strategic long-range planning committee. Julie's not here. Is anyone prepared to give, say anything in her absence? If not, we'll just move on.
Do we want to talk about the meeting on Friday? Go ahead.
Quickly, on Julie's behalf, we did meet for the Long Range Planning Committee on Friday for a two-hour work session, in which we looked at our goals, as well as some of the marketing. We are working with our towns to make certain that we're recognizing the marketing companies that we're using, to find out that we have alignment. For us, we want to make certain that we have the very unique challenge of being the regional school district. So recognizing the efforts of each of our three towns, the more that we can make that a coherent effort means the more that it will support our schools. So we're working at that, as well as establishing our next five-year goals and coming up with what do we want that vision of our students to look like and how are we going to support that within our school system.
I had the privilege to attend that meeting. I'm not on the committee, so I didn't want to comment. But I will tell you that it was a really high-end meeting. It was amazing stuff going on. So excellent work for that committee. Okay, we'll move on to New Business and Updates. I think the first item on the agenda is the projection, the Region 12 Public School Enrollment Projection, prepared by Peter Prada. I don't know whether everyone's had a chance to look at that. Is there a presentation on that?
I'm going to just be quickly. So just a quick summary of what you see within the report. Peter Prada's report does indicate that our enrollment does continue to decline, based on the population of our three towns. He does indicate, though, the inclusion of the agri-science program does counter some of the decline. So if you look at some of the notables, the 2029 enrollment of Chapag is indicated to be approximately 263, which actually would have been dropped considerably if we didn't have the agri-science program. It's the conversation of what do we have for populations within our towns? And as we look at birth rates, the other notable that you'll see is that Burnham School's enrollment actually starts to be higher than that of Booth Free School. Booth's plateaus at approximately 72 students for the next 10 years. So it's one to say that as we're looking at the enrollment of our schools, it is very important that when we're looking at our marketing strategy, that we're looking at promoting our towns. We want to make certain that we're looking towards young families. How do we get them to come to our towns? These really are the gems of Connecticut. But as you read through, I think, I do have to commend this board, because I think your vision to have agri-science, I think your vision to tuition in, really do help the school system not only stay afloat, but also introduces diversity, introduces a lot of new culture and really our ability to thrive. But as far as looking at what we have, when you're looking at the trends, I think we recognize that we have some work to do. We want to get creative. We want to continue to have some of those educational experiences. And we offer a lot right now with a small population, and I think that's really a testament to the support these districts have given the students. So again, there are no surprises, there are no real wow moments, but it is one where we continue to recognize we need to draw younger families into our towns.
Okay, any questions? Okay. We shall move on to AP Results.
Is AP lit on here? I only see the language, or is Language Arts mean language and composition?
That's right. Yep, those two are combined in the Language Arts content area, on this chart.
Same thing with Sciences?
Correct. Yep.
Mike, I have a question for you. Is there any data you could share with us that would indicate just how many students got which marks? I mean, it's nice to know that a certain percentage got three or higher, but a lot of colleges do not give you any credit for a three. And so the question becomes, you know, did we see a significant number of fours and fives?
Sure. So I'm looking at a little bit more detailed breakdown of that. And at the risk of misreading it, as it's here in front of me, and doing a little bit of incorrect math, it looks like the number of fours and fives out of those 129 total tests was 48, leaving 46 scores of three.
And between that fours and fives, do you have a more of a breakdown?
30 fours and 18 fives.
Thank you.
That's, and I should say that that's, this was proofread pretty closely, because it was being distributed to you. And the scores that I just, numbers that I just said to you were not proofread quite as closely, because they were just going to be in my notes. So what you can see here is the result of a push and pull, a struggle that a lot of schools deal with. We don't want to be giving students inappropriate educational experiences that they're not prepared for, right? We don't want students who should be in high school taking college classes that they're not prepared for. And yet, we do want students taking rigorous coursework that they are prepared for. We do know that this becomes public data that gets shared with the Board of Education, that gets captured in public ratings, that are important for our school, our district, and our towns. And at the same time, there are many educators who have some misgivings about some of the content of AP and some of the restrictions and focus areas that different classes have. I think unofficially, some of the good news is that the College Board and the AP folks have been doing revisions to a number of their classes that, as someone who hasn't taught an AP class in a really long time, but talks to people who do and looks closely at the work, it does seem to me that those have been improvements in terms of the relevance, the incorporation of real skills that students need to have to be successful in our time, and a movement, to a degree, away from rote, kind of question trickery that has long been possible in those AP tests. They have been gamable for a long time, and I... They have been gamable for a long time, and I think there have been some improvements to make them a little bit less gamable and to make the learning a little bit more real. At the same time, another balance that we're trying to strike is the balance between the AP and the ECE, the UConn Early College Experience classes. We do have classes that are both ECE and AP classes running in the same space. We also have courses that are ECE and could alternately be offered as AP. We have AP courses that maybe alternately could be offered as AP. And so, you know, the early college experience students, they get a UConn transcript. If they pass the course, they get credit from UConn that can be used at UConn and transferred to many schools. And there are similar benefits for those AP scores, especially as you say, if there's a four or a five. So we are trying to balance all of those things. We think that there is a place for everything, and our students and our teachers are, I think, doing a pretty terrific job of working really hard to make the experience work for the students on the teacher's behalf. And for the students, just working really hard to try to master this rigorous content. Please.
I don't know if you have it at your fingertips, but I know that the College Board does put out the national percentages of students that score a three or higher on individual AP exams. I don't know if they aggregated the way we did with science all kind of put together, but I'm just wondering to help us put it in context. I mean, certainly looking at the data that you just presented to us is very encouraging. I mean, very encouraging. And even the few negatives, like, for example, if you look at history, I think a cursory examination would be a real negative, but if you're going from three students who all just happen to be apparently very bright to a larger group, yes, you're going to have a drop. And so we can kind of even even the few areas of concern, I think either have been addressed or could be explained in terms of the statistics. But I'm just wondering to help us understand when we're looking, for example, just to pull out the first one, Sciences, we went from a 2.91 to 2.93. I'm just wondering what that how that would compare nationally? Is that is that really good news? Is that about the same?
I look forward to including that data in a future report.
Okay. Thank you.
Sorry. Yeah, I mean, that I think that would add some nice context, and it would be helpful for sure. One of the other things that we try to balance is.
I wish I did.
Okay.
I don't like to ask questions, except to my students of questions that I already have the answers to.
Appreciate that.
Just giving him a chance to expound.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. You know, one of the things that's important is whether or not we the students that do take the courses, it, you know, we do say that we make a recommendation, but that the parent and the student can override that recommendation. That's really important. That makes this public school even more of an engine of democracy and equality and social justice than it otherwise would be. If it was just a teacher's recommendation, then you have students and you make assumptions about what they could do, and sometimes those assumptions are incorrect. And so, you know, I don't know the answer to the question about the overall, but I know that a lot of it has to do with who's taken those courses, what kind of culture there is that encourages or discourages them from A, taking the courses, and B, taking the test when they do take the course. So, yeah, I'll learn more about that in, I don't know, the next 364 days.
You're reporting to us. Are you satisfied with where the program is and looking forward to the?
I think that I think that I have a lot more to learn about these courses and about these tests. I am still pretty new in terms of dipping my feet into this content, so I don't think it's fair for me to have a confident, broad statement. I don't know if Mrs. Gallo wants to weigh in anymore, but.
If you think it's for the benefit of the school, is it beneficial?
Well, so I think it is beneficial, at the very least, because we don't have the luxury of being on this on the leading edge of this change. Now, there certainly are places that are saying, we want to be in control of our destiny, our curriculum, our students' time and content, and so we're not going to take the AP courses. Now, those places are not talking about this topic right after the enrollment projections that we just heard. And so we don't have the luxury, I don't think, at this point to be on the leading edge of that discussion, but I I do want to be able to consider it. I am encouraged by the revisions that the AP has made to their tests. I think that they have become of higher quality, and so I'm not I'm not feeling urgent about, you know, dropping AP or anything like that. But it's an important part of our public data. People look at it, and they make decisions about our school. Our students are getting into highly selective colleges, and we do believe that this rigorous program, and the AP is a part of that, is a factor in the highly selective schools that students get into. So, you know, I want to have an open mind personally about anything that we put a lot of time and energy and money into. But this program right now, while I want to continue to think about it and look at it, I think we've made some intelligent adjustments that preceded me. I think we are making good plans for next year's programming. And while I think we could improve here and there in some of the scores and maybe instruction, I am overall satisfied with this program, yes.
Okay, well, that's good. I mean, good, the board has been supporting the program. Over the years, the program has grown. I've always thought for the benefit of the school, and I still believe that, so hopefully you believe the same.
I do.
All right. I mean, I like to hear the fact that you want to keep your mind open. You want to explore. If something needs to be said, I'm sure you'll say it, and that's good. So, thank you.
He can't brag, but so I will on his behalf. I think one of the things that I'm most proud of for Region 12 is that that significant increase in the number of students that are partaking in AP.
Yeah.
And as a board, you know, we've put a lot of time and money into our AP programming. And this is showing that the students are following, and this is showing that the students are excelling. So I think we really need to recognize that. And I also thank you for making some of the adjustments that you have with the program. I really think we've kind of hit the sweet spot where students have other options to challenge themselves, like ECE that you talked about, that it's not just you have to take AP or there's something wrong with you, that there are other options, other avenues for students to excel here. And we're not even talking about the art program, but, you know, certainly in an academic setting, giving students those options and recognizing those and celebrating those, I think, is awesome.
I'll accept those thanks as long as you acknowledge that I had nothing to do with it and other people did. Yes, John, please.
It seems like the interest is waning in the psychology area.
That's one way to say it.
That was in Achilles Hill last year also. So could the reason be that perhaps there's no prerequisite or advanced courses that prepares students for this?
So I'm sure there are a number of factors that contribute to the numbers that you see here. Our response at this point has been to not offer that course as an advanced placement course and to offer it as an honors course. We had enough data, we thought, to support that change. And it's one of the things that we do here at the school of our size is figure out exactly what size program in terms of AP, ECE, honors classes, everything else that we can offer. And it's possible that that course was a little bit outside the boundaries of what we were prepared to do.
I don't have the stats on every AP, but I used to be the AP coordinator, and I could tell you that the AP psychology test is one of the most difficult tests that kids can take. And I think a lot of students on the surface would think that that's a very easy test to take, know about, you know, understanding people. And it's a very, very difficult test. I mean, maybe not on the same realm as AP physics or calculus, but pretty darn close. Certainly the hardest of the humanities to take.
I hear you. I felt the same way as a freshman in college with the psychology. Oh, I know everything about psychology. Yeah, till I got my grade.
I want to ask you one question, Mike. I read an article, it was in the Washington Post, and it talked about the fact that because I think it said on average about 40% of high school students take AP tests. And they believe that that's causing college, people who admit students to college, to start to discount the value of an AP test. Have you could you do you have any comments on that? Have you read some of the same literature? Or is there some sense in which I know we encourage a lot of students to get involved in it, but that might be diminishing the value of the test? So the question is, is that happening?
I mean, I, yeah, I don't think I'm quite the right person to speak more broadly on it, but the one one thing I'll say about that, and maybe Mrs. Gallo can add to it, is that while that may be a macro trend, we're living in a micro world, and so I think that we have to encourage our students to take the courses that are appropriate for them. And if an effect of that over some long-term, big scale is that there's a shift in the way that high schools and colleges measure rigor, then, you know, that may happen. But I think the world that our students live in now is one where it is a recognized measure of rigor, and those who are ready, I think, should be taking them.
I did read that study, and we're having two different conversations. One is we want our students to challenge themselves, period. And AP is one way to do that, ECE is another, and we can talk about a whole bunch more. What struck me about that article and many to follow is that it negates the fact that a lot of college decisions or college studies are about finance and not about learning. The increase in students taking AP is causing students to come into college as sophomores, second half of second semester sophomores, even juniors, which costs colleges money. So I did find it striking that the article didn't mention that there's a financial impact of that. So we can have a very scholarly study in a in a newspaper that says this is what's happening when there's another factor that's not being taken into account. So I would I would I would have countered that article because I did read it with not the whole picture. That's just and that's my opinion.
Anyone else? Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. DeBrito, you're up next with Reading Rescue.
I'm happy to share this great opportunity and explain the importance of reading rescue for children and teachers. And Megan did.
I'm sorry, Teresa, is it possible to increase the volume on that microphone? Because I really can't hear. There's no speaker?
There are no speakers. I have to increase the volume. The speaker's right here.
All right. Well, you will have to resonate, please.
Okay. Good evening. I'm happy to share this great opportunity and explain the importance of reading rescue for children and teachers. Megan did acknowledge and thank Jane Benson, who is a local resident who actually donated this program and the funding to allow this program to come to Region 12. So I'm going to give you an overview of why this is so important. So Reading Rescue is an intervention model specifically developed for students in grade one. It's provided with one individual at a time. There is a common screener that's used to identify students that may be at risk for reading. And the screener that we use is DIBELS. It's a cute little acronym for Dynamic Indicators of Basic Early Literacy Skills. And it measures the student's capacity to fluently name letters, to identify letter-sound relationships, and to really look for the early reading indicators for kids who will be successful. It is also built on five pillars of literacy. These pillars include phonemic awareness, which is the ability to understand letter-sound relationships, phonics, which allows us to take that knowledge and read words, fluency, which leads to automaticity of fluently reading, vocabulary comprehension as well are part of the five pillars. And each session is a daily 30 minutes with individual students. This partnership is a commitment for two years and does include training of teachers. There are five days that they will come in this school year. They will also come and observe teachers in action. And the great thing is that they've expanded the number of adults that will participate in the training. So we have first-grade classroom teachers. We have the reading interventionists, and the literacy tutors will be a part of this And they will come in and monitor student progress, and we will collect data for that I'd like to share with you the research on how children learn to read. First, I'd like to acknowledge the National Research Council, which did do a lot of research about children reading because, as a nation, the results are showing that our kids are failing at reading. And the study concluded that we can address this at an early age, and how we address it is with phonics instruction. In addition, Congress mandated that the National Reading Panel establish a group of researchers, educators, to further dig into all of the research that was available. And they concluded that what children need are the same five pillars that Reading Rescue is grounded on. The NAEP assessment, which is the nation's report card, the National Assessment of Educational Progress, shows that just over a third of fourth graders in this nation are proficient at reading. That's a startling statistic. The research also shows us how our brains learn to read. So I have this image, and I want to just highlight a couple of sections. So the left hemisphere of our brain does all the work in order for us to be fluent readers. So in this area here, this is the capacity of visualizing in your mind the words. So you're vocalizing them in your mind as you see them. This area here in the in the further rear of the left hemisphere actually helps us decode the sounds of words. And here at the lower back end of the left hemisphere is our memory of words. So the better someone reads, the more active the left hemisphere of the brain becomes. And how do we know this? Because of technology. We've done a lot of brain imaging, and we have learned that about 20% of the population has reading difficulties. Now, that is on a continuum of difficulty, some, you know, stronger than others. But I wanted to show you an image of a brain that does not have the left hemisphere activated. So this is a brain of a child before intervention. And what phonics-based instruction does is it activates the left hemisphere of the brain. So they have proven how we should instruct children that have reading difficulties. Now, for someone who's never had a reading challenge, no one can comprehend this. You might not even remember how you learned to eat, walk, never mind how you learned to read. You just always did it. For the child who does. For the child who does not have that implicitly in their brain, it's a real, real struggle. And they recognize it. They know that others can read and they have difficulties. A red flag for us is fluency. They are not automatic at reading. It takes them a long time to figure out words. So I want to talk just a minute about learning English, because for native speakers, you might think if you didn't have a reading issue, that it's an easy language to learn. But it's a tricky language to learn, because not every rule applies. So I just want us to think, for example, glacier versus shee. That c and glacier has the same sound as sh and shee. Cat versus cape. We have a CVC word, it's a consonant-vowel consonant, and it has a short a. But then we have another word that has the magic e, that silent e, and we've got the long vowel. What about to read versus red versus red, the color red? So you see, there's a lot of tricks that if you don't have difficulty, you don't even realize that your brain is able to differentiate and make it clear to you when you're reading text. What about base versus bass? How about tough versus way? GH in tough actually has a very specific phoneme, a sound. And then we go and put it in a different word, and it's completely silent. Night versus kit. That k is silent in night, but it's pronounced in the word kit. Pair versus pair. So you can see, a student who maybe is not a native speaker coming to the U.S. also is going to have some difficulties, because we have words that sound alike, they're spelled differently, they have different meanings, so there are all kinds of nuances. Another one, no versus knowledge versus cow. The ow together, and those three words have completely different sounds. How about yacht? Just something for thought there. So Reading Rescue provides that very specific instruction that children will benefit from. I've talked a little bit about the research. I've shown you brain imaging, because I wanted you to really see the magnitude of the training that we're going to receive. And also, in other languages, they don't have the complexity of the English language. For example, in Spanish, the letters, their name, and the sound they make are exactly the same. So not have multiple versions, where in English, you have a letter name, but that letter has different sounds. So you see, something we do so naturally is not natural to others. That's why it's critical that as educators, we understand the research, and that we utilize the research in our classroom. So we're thrilled that we're going to be a part of this endeavor. And I'm looking forward, hopefully, to one day actually thanking Jane personally, myself. So I'm hoping that gives you a little glimpse of why it's so valuable. Thursday. So they'll be in, two days this week, they come back in February for two days, and the adults will start right away using it with students. And then they'll observe them. They come back another day this year, and there's this constant give and take. They also have set up liaisons, so the school interventionists will be the liaison between what's happening at the school and Reading Rescue.
If I could, I'll just, I'll go the same direction I went with Mike. Do you, and I don't want to put you on the spot on this, because I know it's something that we have to look at every year, each class coming in, each young people. But do you feel that it's a significant issue in the region?
We've started already addressing it years ago, because the state did provide training to all districts. And I jumped on that when that happened, and all of our K through 3rd grade teachers went to that state training and really looked at the research, came back, and I was really proud of them, ready to implement in the classroom. And we absolutely have a phonics-based reading program. So we've already been doing that in the whole class. But there are children that need more time, and we want to make sure that we identify those children and provide them that instruction.
And, and I think when we looked at the offer, because that's really what this was, was an offer, we don't have a large amount of students that this is exactly targeted for. However, this is creating stronger teachers. If you can understand the sophistication of phonics, and how do you build your readers, and how are you actually developing that? And that's really what it is. It's giving that awareness and making it a systemic form of how do you build that reader? If you can teach to the struggling student, you can teach better to all students. And I think this is really what the power of this offer is, and the gift it's going to give to all students.
Yes.
If it's possible, can we see a copy of the assessment that the kids would get?
Sure. I don't think that'll be a problem.
We have DIBELS.
Yeah.
Mike, go ahead.
Teresa, I read somewhere once that, that improving student literacy is also correlated with numeracy skills.
Absolutely.
So I don't know if this particular program also has any data about what we could expect as far as improvements there.
It's specific to reading. Of course, if you're going to be a better reader, then you can apply that in word problems, because there's so much reading in mathematics, absolutely. So I definitely do see it complementing numeracy.
Yeah.
I was just wondering if they, sometimes with, with all the brain research that they're providing, I don't know if it's activating the same center that would be involved in numeracy?
Different.
Thought it was still on. I don't know if it's activating the same center as what they're highlighting for reading acquisition.
It's a different skill set, right? So phonics and actually putting meaning to letters, and then grouping letters to sound out words, and add meaning to those words is different than the numeracy skills. Thank you.
Any other questions? Nicole, cafeteria changes and updates.
So given that it's somewhat of a hot topic, I thought I would take it head-on. For those of you that is parents, you've probably seen some of the communications going home. At the board's suggestion, we did send a survey home to both parents and students about two weeks ago. I do have the results of those surveys, snapshot of them, not going to go over the raw data. But what is interesting is we got 68 student responses and 102 parent responses. So the parents had a little bit more of an interest in providing feedback to us than the students did. Things that stuck out from the survey, the number one reason that students and parents do purchase their meals from our cafeteria is convenience. What we take away from that is that they're not coming to the cafeteria for taste or quality. Most students indicated that they eat breakfast at home overwhelmingly, which gives us a lot of insight into why our breakfast program numbers are so low. So that was helpful. It's good to know that our kids are eating. It's too bad that they're not eating with us. But breakfast didn't seem to be as much of a food quality issue as lunch. When we asked students what they would like to see on our menus, I'll share some of the responses with you. An overwhelming response was bacon, both in the form of on a burger or a BLT. Several students recommended that we do restaurant takeout. Cupcakes was a big favorite, ribs, sushi, and pasta and salad bars. I can say pretty much without exception, none of those things appear on our school menus. Nor are we allowed to add them, given the federal regulations that govern our program. When we did ask what would encourage students to purchase more menus from us, or more meals from us, more appealing food topped the list. So we have been working toward making changes to make things more appealing, more appetizing, better quality. One of the things that we're really excited about is that we have added Boar's Head Deli meats to our program in place of the meats that we have sold in the past, which were purchased from the USDA. So Boar's Head will be, is actually visiting our building with signage and coolers this week, and we'll be rolling out Boar's Head Deli meats in both our sandwiches and our salads exclusively starting next week. Boar's Head is going to be on site, offering tastings of the different meats that we will offer in the menu to the students. One thing that I took away from the survey that I thought was good was, we had put some true and false questions for the parents about, true or false, about nutrition standards that we have to comply with. And overwhelmingly, our parents understood them. One thing, if you do look at the survey results that I gave you, the bar graph, as much as we got a lot of negative feedback in terms of the quality and taste and the food being appealing, they overwhelmingly confirmed that they think it's healthy. So I think that in terms of meeting the regulations that the USDA puts on us, USDA puts on us for healthy foods, we're meeting those. Now we need to find a way to do it in a more appetizing fashion for our kids. Some of the things that we rolled out recently, which have been a huge success, are smoothies at both breakfast and lunch, fruit and yogurt smoothies. And I believe it was two weeks ago now, we added a baked pretzel machine, and the pretzels have been flying out of the case. The downside to smoothies and pretzels is you have to add a lot to them to make them a compliant meal. So when you look at the numbers of smoothies and pretzels that we're selling, those fall into à la carte items instead of meals. One of the goals this year, in the past, we left our cafeteria open from the very early hours in the morning through the closure after the last lunch wave. We now close the cafeteria between breakfast and lunch. And the purpose is, that is guidance from the USDA, because if you allow students to continue to trickle in throughout the day, they buy à la carte items and they never purchase a meal. What we're trying to do is steer the kids toward purchasing a meal, because they are nutritionally sound, they provide fruits and vegetables, they provide whole grains and protein. So we would rather that they were purchasing meals from us at mealtime than purchasing snacks all day long. We were weary that that would affect our sales, and I can report that it has not. What has happened is people are purchasing what they need to purchase when the cafeteria is open. So any fear of losing sales because we closed down is not a reality. I did put in your packet, so let me back, back up a little bit. So that's, that's the update on the food and quality, and what we're trying to do with our kids. The other aspect of food service is the financial aspect. One thing that Megan and I started this year wanting to do was to cut the deficit that the food service program is running. If you look at the financial information that I provided, you can see that we have made a lot of strides toward that goal. We didn't expect it to happen overnight, but I did do a six-month report for you, so that you can see where we are six months later. I'm going to first start with sales. It's one without the red deficit numbers on it. If you, because we are in a small district, every time we look at a percentage, percentages are skewed, because one number changes things. I did give you the breakfast numbers, just so that you had the information. As I said when I started, we aren't making very many strides in breakfast service. The last two months, they have picked up. If you look at the change per day, you need to extrapolate that out to what that means monthly. So in the months of November and December, we sold 20 more breakfasts than we had in September and October. And it was just an uptick of one per day over our numbers in 2018. So I'm comparing the same three month, same four months of 2018 to the months in 2019, which end on December 31st. The good news is, with the lunch meals, the lunch student meals and the à la carte sales, we are creeping upward slowly. So what all these numbers mean in terms of, we're selling more meals, we're selling more à la carte items, and what that means is our revenue and expenditure side is changing. So if you turn to the next handout, you'll see that our revenue in 18 calendar year for the first six months was $86,000. Now, that number is a little bit misleading, because we had eight more operating days in that period, which means we had eight more opportunities to sell breakfast and lunch and snacks. So that number is higher than the revenue over the same period this year, but not if you take the daily average operating costs. So from a daily perspective, we're running at $1,200 a day, as opposed to $1,100 a day last year. So we have cut the deficit from a daily operating position from $550 to $325 a day. So we've cut it by about $225, which is, this early into us trying to turn the program away is a great savings. If you look at that over the six-month period, we've cut it almost, the deficit almost in half, which, if you had said, how long did I think, would I have thought it would take us to cut the deficit? I would have thought it would take us two years to cut the deficit completely. So I think we're off to a really good start in terms of trying to bring the program, program back to revenue positive. The reason we want the program revenue positive is because the more revenue the program has, the revenue by law goes right back into the program. So to the extent that we gain more revenue, we can add variety, we can add quality, we can add people to manage a deli bar, sandwiches made to order. So we need to get those, that revenue positive, so that we can add those improvements that do cost money to the program. Questions? Sure.
Mike?
Yes, thank you. Very thorough. Let me start with the, the survey results that you started us with. The first bullet point where you talked about convenience is the number one reason that students gave and parents gave for why they're buying lunch and breakfast. You noted that it wasn't taste or quality, and I'm just wondering whether the convenience was because they've come to not expect taste or quality, and that's why convenience has become the new norm and the new number one expectation.
I think that is, given the result, the raw results of the survey, I think that that is an accurate statement.
Okay, yeah. And so, in my mind, I mean, the first step in trying to turn that around would be not only some of the programmatic changes that you're looking at, and I applaud you for, but also looking at the data. So my, to my knowledge, this is the first time we've actually surveyed students and parents to this extent. Is that correct?
Well, tomorrow is my first anniversary of Region 12. I can tell you that since my time here, it's the first time. I can't speak to before I was here.
Well, I've been on the board for a while, and it's, that's some of the other veterans can remember. I don't, I don't remember any other kind of a survey. So I think for, in order for us to turn around the financials, or maybe even more importantly, offer just better food for our kids, the first step is getting that baseline data, which you've done so nicely for us. And so now we, we can kind of target what we need to do to keep, keep improving.
I agree, and I think my takeaway from the survey responses was that I wish we had done one sooner, so that this could be the comparative data, because we have made a lot of changes. But we'll have to use this as the jumping off point and see what it looks like in another six months.
So, so to just put some context around, I was able to meet with a group of seniors, and we were, and the first thing I, I have to say is, they said, "Thank you." They recognized the changes that people are trying to do and to improve. And they specifically brought up the smoothie machine, and they brought up the pretzels. And then I said to them, you know, "Stay tuned, we're getting Boar's Head meat in a panini press." And I'm going to call out my friend Teddy, who throws his hands out, and goes, "Hang out, we're getting a panini machine?" And I said, "Well, yes." He goes, "No, no, 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 no. Before I graduate, we're getting a panini machine." And to note, like, that level of excitement, which I think when he just marked "yes" as a good thing, it's really, they're feeling some of those changes. They're, to say what needs to be routine, because if the quality is starting to, and they're enjoying what's put out there, I think it's all part of the evolution. But I think the changes that, you know, Nicole's been working with, we're starting to see results.
John?
John? How have the out-of-district taken this? I can't imagine getting up at 5:30 in the morning, possibly without- I can't imagine getting up at 5:30 in the morning, possibly without eating breakfast, and going all day until 2:30, and getting home at, who knows, 4:30, depending on the commute, and not eating a full lunch, or having some sustenance.
I-
Is there a good participation among the, the out-of-district, at least?
What's happening with the Ag kids is, the cohort that came in was very cohesive, and they spent a lot of time in their own areas, eating lunch together. They didn't even come to the cafeteria, so they were bringing food from home. Speaking with the cafeteria staff, just in the last two months, the out-of-town agri-science students have started to participate in the cafeteria and to purchase food from us. So I think that for them, it may have been a comfort issue. They're finally getting, you know, their bearings about them, they're in a new space, they know what's available to them. So we have seen an uptick in the agri-science kids participating in the lunch program, mostly from an à la carte perspective, which means, most of our kids who buy à la carte, they're supplementing something that they brought from home. They're buying chips, they're buying cookies, a granola bar, a yogurt, a beverage. So that's predominantly what the agri-science kids are purchasing at this point, but they have started to come in, and I can tell you, I don't think we had one agri-science student in September or October, and that has started to shift.
Jen?
So just a few things. First of all, all kidding aside, because I know you and I joke, thank you so much for all of your hard work in making this program improve the way that it has. And I'm happy for you especially, to see the quick turnaround in terms of savings. So kudos to you. I also just want to, I feel like, I just need to say this, because I've been hearing a lot, especially in this meeting, we talk about Chapag, and we talk about our students, and then we talk about our agriscience students. And I'd like us to be more mindful that they're all Chapag students. I know my kids, you know, they come here at seven, we come here at 7 o'clock in the morning, and then they would have sports, and then they wouldn't come home till 5 o'clock. So I don't think that we just need to worry about our agri-science students, but all of our students. And I just feel like when we talk separately, we somehow put them in two different boxes. And I just want us to all be, I mean, obviously, we want to be thoughtful about the program, but I just think across the board, they're Chapag students. So I just need to make that clear.
Absolutely. I agree. Michael?
Not to negate at all what you're saying, but our agri-science students, I think, could maybe work with you, in tandem with you, to improve our food service here at Chapag. You know, I just think about that beautiful kitchen that we put in for them, which is phenomenal. And I realize that our program is only in its infancy, although soon-to-be sophomore year. But I'm wondering if that could be a task for, maybe not this coming year, maybe it's their junior or senior year, but, you know, what else could they do? What ideas could they bring to the table? Literally to the table. You know, one of the things my school has is an old-fashioned victory garden, where we got in agreement with our food service provider to have fresh fruits and vegetables supplemented. Of course, it can't be the only source of food for Chapag students, but to supplement, to get that agreement that we could have, when it's in season, fresh lettuce for kids in their salads, I think would be awesome.
So to that point, Rachel Murray, who is one of our agri-science teachers, reached out to me to talk about how, what are the clearances we need to be able to use what we grow in our cafeteria. And Ed Advance, as our consultant, did that research for me, and the feedback that we got was that we can use it. I had to, Rachel had to do some more research about how the food is fertilized, because that matters. She knows that, so she's going to use the methods that are required by the USDA to be able to use the produce in our program. Unfortunately, we cannot cook in the agri-science kitchen and serve in the cafeteria, but the agriscience students who are in the food service pathway can come into our cafeteria and help our service staff that's in the cafeteria, if they wanted to do like a special menu day or special produce. So we've already started to look into that and hope to implement that as soon as they can get a garden up and going.
Good. Anyone else? Nicole, thank you very much. Speaking of agri-science, we're going to move on to the agri-science update. Superintendent, we'll talk about the program.
Well, Greg mentioned the arrival of our little lambs. Our two sheep, Weston and Dottie, had their offspring last weekend. We're very excited. We're still waiting on Mystique to deliver her lamb. We also welcomed Gray and Reina, who are our two alpacas last week. These alpacas were donations from the Wallingford Agri-science Program. So please know, we are working with our agri-science cohorts. They had received a grant for these alpaca, and then had too many alpaca. So they gave it, not only did they give it, they actually delivered it to us. It was on a Sunday afternoon, so to know their teachers gave the time, they are there. Again, the names Gray and Reina, and when you see them, you don't have to be told which is which, because Gray is Gray. But I do have to say, and right now, they're all together in the temporary barn area. Everybody's getting along. The students have actually had to learn with the birthing process that the ewes have to be separated after the delivery, because if the lambs attach to the wrong ewes, they will be rejected by both mothers. So our agri-science students came out and built the actual separation crates, and were immediately on-site. So to say that the learning experiences that are happening are already fast and furious. We do have two horses identified. We are waiting again for our barn to be completely set, where construction, everything has moved off of the area, because we recognize they're going to be acclimating to a new area. These are temperamental animals to begin with, so we want to have the best environment for them to be successful. So we are working with ONG as far as timing, and I'd rather give a little bit of cushion to the construction side, to make certain that our horses are welcomed to a safe and quiet environment up there. Additionally, we are working on our new classes for the upcoming school year. We have delivered the pathways, so we had that structural design that was there. However, we're currently looking at adding ECE biotechnology for next year. There are also some discussions of some additional ECE options, so we're taking a look at what we are able to offer and what makes sense. AP Environmental Science is what we're looking to add in the 21-22 school year. So even as we're setting the stage for what is the, I don't want to call it the basic agri-science pathways, but we're already looking at, how do we make certain that they're getting some of those college electives that they may be interested in getting, that still fits into their agri-science requirements? Additionally, I will be attending an agri-science audit in Suffield in March, and the reason that I'm going to do this is to better understand what are the requirements of the state with regards to an audit, because we will be audited. They will look at curriculum, they're going to look at our programs, our offerings. So if I can be part of a site visit, it gives me a little bit of an understanding of what we need to do as we're developing this program. But again, for us, it also is a nice way to say, oh, that's what they have, what can we do to expound upon and make even better? We did receive the Perkins Grant, as I mentioned. It was a $7,590 grant. We used that money to buy the drones for our program. The drones actually weren't falling under FFNE. This is where we're trying to do everything to make certain that our taxpayers know that this program is not going to be a burden on them. So we have found a number of grant opportunities. Our next grant opportunity that we're exploring is a supplemental Perkins Grant worth between $15,000 to $30,000. So please note, we are chasing these dollars down, and everything is to make certain that we are providing a more robust program. I did promise our last meeting that we would talk about the numbers, because I know everybody's always curious to say, what do our enrollment projections look like for next year? So our last meeting was on January 6th, which was after the due date of the January 3rd application date. And at that time, we had had 52 applicants. We are up to 62 applicants for our second cohort, and 44 of those applications are from our sending towns. Taking a look-
Are they all-
That's, I'm going to break them. Bear with me, I've just got to get the clicker. Is this still on? Still on. Okay. As you can see, the breakdown by towns, we do have a Sherman application. I was a little excited about that, because I didn't like having the zero there. However, we are still down for our applications. But as you can see, this is what we have for our breakdown. We have 58 eighth graders who have applied to our program, two ninth graders, and two 10th graders. Again, the breakdown is now male 24, female 38, and our private school applications held through to five, so all of the additional applications we received were all from our public schools. So, taking a look, again, just looking at what is our cohort between this current school year and last year. As you can see with Sherman, we are down by three applicants. We are up in Newtown. We are down one in New Milford. We are down one in New Fairfield, down one in Danbury, down one in Brookfield, down four in Region 12, and there's no change from our others sending towns. So as far as what does this actually mean for our applications and what we're going to be able to offer, the good news is, is that many of these numbers are falling within our caps already. So we will be able to offer, based on if they are going to meet the criteria for our agri-science programs, we will still trend towards our business model, in which we will be able to offer between 28 and 30 seats to sending towns, and what works for Chapag students that meet our criteria. So, questions? Jim?
Do you know how many of those are from sending towns?
Eighth graders from the, the majority of students, and I apologize, I don't have it offhand, but I can tell you, the ninth and the 10th graders that you see on that list are Chapag students. So we did not have sending towns that were ninth and 10th graders.
All right, that, yeah, the eighth graders are the ones who are important.
Right. So 44, I'm sorry, we had 44 applicants from sending towns, so that means 44 eighth graders from sending towns.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. I apologize.
Megan, I'm sorry if I didn't catch it on your last slide, but that, that number, 62 applicants total-
Mm-hmm.
-how does that compare to the previous year?
We had 72 our previous year, so we are down 10.
Down 10, total?
Correct.
Okay.
Go ahead, Alex.
Yeah, last year, we had 46 enrollment and 72 applications by the ninth.
Mm-hmm.
What was the governing factor on the 46? Was it that that's what we wanted to take, or that's the amount that qualified, or?
We did, we do have qualifying. So when they apply, they have to have three letters of recommendation. We look at their state testing scores. We look at their performance academically. We look at community service they've done. We, they actually, each student has to be interviewed by a staff member, in which we have to talk about, what is your experience? Why do you want to get into agri-science? Talking about community service they've done. What have you done? Maybe you're a Boy Scout. Have you been in karate? Have you been a sports player? So we really look for a well-rounded student, and we also want to make certain that they're academically solid. The program is rigorous.
But did we cap it at 46, or is that just the number of the 72 that qualified?
We hit, I'm going to tell you, I, we had a waitlist of students who were qualified, but did not, because the cap's in the town. So for example, I'll give you-
So 46 was it, sort of?
That was our it. However, I can tell you that some students did choose not to come to Chapag after we offered them. I believe last year, we offered 52 applicants a position at Chapag, and of those 52, 46 came. And we were able to go to the waitlist for a couple of those spots that were opened. And so I can tell you that I think, when we look at 46, I think of the 52 that we accepted last year, I think we had six who didn't. So we sent, we then dipped into the, dipped into the waitlist.
So are we looking to do 46 again this year ideally, or not?
We will probably accept higher, because we know that we're not going to get everybody who wants to.
I got you. Okay. Thank you.
No worries. Any other questions?
Anyone else?
John.
John?
Are you done with the cohort numbers?
Yes, I believe so.
Yeah. I saved my comment on the Prouder report until the Ag, because I found his projections pretty concerning. He predicts that the Ag population will peak at 96 students in 2022. That's two years from now, leaving another 18 years of debt service remaining. In 2016, the board at that time agreed that out-of-district enrollment, that out-of-district enrollment of 120 students was a conservative enrollment number. Prouder's projection shows that even with Ag, in 2029, or 10 years from now, there will only be 263 students in this high school, which is 30, approximately 30 students less than the population of the high school in 2015, when Ag was first considered. If everyone got, I don't know if everyone saw the article in the Voices paper, and this ties in what Greg was talking about at the conference he attended. Nanawag hosted a conference which discussed the issue of the state possibly funding the entirety of the Ag tuition, or $12,000. And Senator Burtell, which is our state congress, our state senator for this district, goes on to point out that he is the ranking member of the State Education Committee, and he would willingly put forth legislation to address the issue, but that it would be prudent to get other VoAg school districts to join in, as well as their representatives. If possible, a coalition of VoAg schools could hire a lobbyist to assist. So I'm happy that students are applying, but we've got to factor in the possible caps by New Milford and Danbury. And I don't even know if Prouder considered the possibility that New Milford and Danbury will cap. If we can get the state to pony up the entire 12,000, I think that would go, you know, you know, help us in getting our population that we're going to need just to break even. So.
I, I agree. That is something that I think would, would help us exceed our business model projection faster. I can tell you that, that meeting that Dr., Dr. Joe in Region 14, him and I have worked together. I've been working very closely with Region 14 with those conversations. I'm also working with Michelle Cook, who is a representative, who has constantly championed the legislation for agri-science. So I can tell you, we are putting forth together, we are talking about working with Region 1, Region 6, and Region 7. So I think we're recognizing the need to have many voices. As I mentioned, even with the alpaca, we are working with our agri-science, and I think that we do need to have our voices echo. It is a disservice to students that at some point, the burden that is placed on the towns in order to pay for their students to attend agri-science schools versus, we're not getting the same funding as magnet schools. And we are not getting the same funding as, you know, some of those other programs that are out there. And it is important. This is where we're talking about, it's sustainability. This is the environmental factor, and we do need to champion our legislators to pay for this, because these are the jobs that are needed for the future. So I completely agree, and I applaud what Dr. O has done in Region 14. Him and I talked together. I couldn't make that meeting, but I think that it is coming together, and it's- And we do need to champion our legislators to pay for this because these are the jobs that are needed for the future. So I completely agree and I applaud what Dr. O has done in Region 14. Him and I talked together. I couldn't make that meeting, but I think that it is coming together and it's putting this again and again and again in front of our legislators to demand equality of providing this type of education to all students.
No, it would make a difference because at that point, the sending towns would only be responsible for the transportation end of it. So, I mean, the populations from the sending towns could possibly double. And that's what we need to do because, you know, when you figure it out, we need 30 out of district every year guaranteed, so.
Well, I, and when we did the business model last year, we said 28 because we recognized there was going to be a bit of a fluctuation in understanding there's attrition. The good news in all of our numbers, we don't have attrition out of our 46. And so that was already an over enrollment that we had taken last year because we had, we had factored 35. And so to say, and I'm going to say this, let me make that correction. We anticipated 35 freshmen. And so we overshot that. However, we also recognize that as the business model goes, it's 46 plus what we enroll this year as well. So we want to make certain that we constantly are keeping. But to say that the more we can work to provide this opportunity for more, I'm on board with that.
A couple other potential bright spots that I'm, I'm thinking about for the future. One would be that we're still in conversations with Bethel. And while we can't expect a huge number, you know, even if we could expect a modest number from them, if they do join Region, the Region 12 catchment area for agri-science, that would be phenomenal. The other potential that I think we need to think about is that, you know, some of our sending towns, Danbury in particular, have problems with trying to meet the needs of all their burgeoning student numbers. And we might be able to, you know, we can't solve that ourselves, but we might be able to offer one small outlet for them. So there might be conversations, I'm thinking, in the future where they might be amenable to maybe raising that cap just a little bit.
Well, we're always hopeful. And I also, I also want to say to people, it's also that careful what you wish for too. Because remember, 80% of the time, our agri-science students are taking typical classes, which right now I don't have to hire a new math teacher. I don't have to hire a new English teacher. I don't have to hire new social studies teachers. We're able to absorb with what we have. When we start to push that capacity, it also means that I'm adding FTEs in other places. So I understand and I want to push because I want to grow. And more than I just want to grow, I want to give every child the opportunity who wants to be here to come here. But it's also one right now that as we're growing, we are able to absorb and handle with what we have and not water down the education or water down that personalization that gets to happen here at Shapog. So it's a, we're watching all of those things. I know I'm always going to watch the bottom line and those dollars, but we also want to watch the educational experience too.
Yes.
I just wanted to speak to one of John's concerns about whether or not the Prouder report recognized the sending towns caps. He did take that information into consideration. So as we go to year to year, if those caps do lift, then his report, he would reconsider those numbers given the lift of the caps.
Jim?
If I may, the fact is there is no cap. I mean, not the numbers that Danbury was talking about capping. They're already exceeding that. I would, I would assume that they would, you know, hopefully continue in that vein and hopefully grow. There is no cap, I mean.
Danbury has said to us that seven students a year is what they're looking to send. And I think that's what John's speaking to.
All right.
Yeah, and, no, I'm just concerned that, again, in 2029, he predicts the in-district population to be 178. So we need to keep growing the Ag population. I don't know what else to say about it. It's like, and eventually the Ag population is going to be far greater than the mainstream.
And that's why, I think we can't rely on agri-science alone to, to fill our classrooms. I think that's where in working with, in partnerships with our towns, we're looking to try to get young families into our towns and so they can see here are the opportunities that are afforded to them. So agri-science is nice because this is the opportunity that we can provide more education, but it is one where it's not going to save us from the declining enrollment. That's where we need to work with our towns to promote our regions.
I can't see whose hands, oh, Mary.
John, also, I saw a, an article also about Sherman has declining enrollment too. So, I mean, we're not only dealing with it here. So they're not going to send us as many kids because they have declining enrollment too.
Everybody does.
And I'm sure that some of the other towns.
Sherman doesn't have another school after, so they don't have a high school. So the students have the opportunity to go to the different ones.
But I mean, we're going to, the percentage is going to be less.
And Mary, you bring up a great, because enrollments are declining in many towns across Connecticut.
Okay. Any other questions? Good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, we'll move on to my report on building status. Not quite finished yet, but it's getting close. We expect a temporary certificate of occupancy to be issued on Friday, the 31st of January. So that will be for the F building, which is the last building that has not been given a temporary certificate of occupancy, which means that following on the temporary certificate, now that the last portion of the project is coming online, will be the permanent certificate of occupancy. So we're, we're looking forward to that. They're, they're still doing, mopping up some areas in the, in the, the large animal building and demonstration building, and that's moving along quite nicely. Ceilings are in. There's a few things on the ground that are being finished up. They're waiting for a few things to come in that haven't quite arrived so they can finish some of the floors, which is what some of the issue is over there. And these are floors that get epoxied, so they're fine to continue with cement on them until the epoxy is finished. And that's pretty much where we are. The exterior work, if anything is pushed out past the end of January, it's, it's site work. There's some, some paving that has to be done. Once the asphalt plants open again in the end of the month of March, beginning of the month of April, there are some areas that need to be graded and seeded. The athletic field is complete except for seeding. That has to happen in the spring. And it's more or less outdoor stuff. You see this pile of dirt in front of the school is, it's there, but it's diminishing. There used to be one five to 10 times that size in the back, which has now been cleared away. They have completed the turn, animal turnout area except for seeding. And they have, are most of the way, almost complete with drainage on the outdoor riding ring. When that drainage is completed, they'll finish the, the soils there and have that ready for, for seeding in the spring. And then that facility will be, will be completed. They've already installed the, the elevated viewing area that was, that was one that we asked to be put in to accommodate handicap students. And that is, is in place. And so it's, they're making some tremendous progress over there and should be finishing up in the next few days with the work inside the building. The inside of the building is looking great. The horse stalls, they've, they've installed the, the rubber floors in, in much of it. And they are now working on installing the watering and feeding areas in those stalls. That should be completed this week and we should, we should have those almost ready for horses. The, the exterior area of those stalls includes a turnout, an individual turnout area for each horse. And those areas are fenced and complete. And so we're just, we're just waiting for the finishing touches. So we're almost done. The, the portions of the inside of this building, the science labs have been complete. We've taken possession of them a while ago. Also, the areas inside the building to the north are complete. The shops are all operational and would have students in them and are, and are working. So that's where we are. Oh, by the way, we're still on or under budget. Jim? Or Mike?
Megan, I saw in a few of your communications that you've got, you've got some.
Oh, I'm sorry. Can I interrupt here? We have to take a pause, we have to take a brief recess for the changing of the tapes in one minute. So why don't we do it now and we'll get it done.
Facilities and sounds like it's, it's ready for its close-up. And so I saw in one of your communications that you have something for the general public planned for April?
Yeah. Well, we have a couple of things that are being planned for April. We are going to look to do the ribbon cutting in April. Additionally, in April, what we're going to do at Shapog is we are going to have a Student Professional Development Day. And what that is, is we're going to provide a number of different offerings of things that they may need to learn how to do in life. How to change a tire, how to cook three basic meals, how to change your oil, how to, how to apply for a job. Balance a checkbook is one of them. How to do your resume, interview skills. But it's not just Shapog kids. We're going to open that up to the entire community so they can learn alongside of Shapog kids. So if any of you want to learn how to change a tire, figure out how to get your oil done, I'm going to tell you, we're going to offer that out. But that's an opportunity, but what people are going to see is they're going to be able to experience our kitchens. They're going to be able to experience our shops. They're going to actually see what is the capacity to learn within Shapog. So Alex, I think you once said to me, I need to get foot traffic. Not only are we going to get foot traffic, you're going to learn alongside students.
The other, the other program that you mentioned was, I think in a conversation with some of the seniors, where the seniors had said to you, we would love to see actually some of these new spaces. So tell us a little bit about that.
So I did. In talking to the seniors, a group of them had said to me, it's, well, I started talking about the things that we had coming up in the program. And they said, I, I've never even seen the new building. I haven't seen the new parts of the, you know, they're, they're very focused to get from one class to the next. They're not even enjoying what is their, their new surroundings. So I immediately left the meeting, went to Kim Gallo and said, as soon as we get the TCO and everything is set in our new barn, I want a tour for the students. So we are setting that up. They have been the ones who have, we have, we've made them, made them deviate from what is their normal experience. They certainly deserve a personalized tour of their own school.
Jen, go ahead.
Just, just because it made me think of it. When some of the college students came back to do the assembly with the students, my daughter was one of them. And very nicely, Laura, Lori Travada brought all the students, the alumni, including my daughter, and brought them on a tour, which was so exciting for them. And I kind of felt the same way. It's like they had sacrificed a lot last year with the change. And then for them to be able to see it was very exciting. So I would, I really appreciated her taking the time to do that with the students.
Mary.
On the tour, I went on tour with Greg, with the Building Committee just to see what was going on. And I'm amazed at how much Greg knows every little thing that's going on. He looked, oh, look, we still need trim over here. And I'm amazed at how much you know about this building. So, thank you.
Well, it is, it's a fun process. Jim?
Oh, I just wanted to say two things. One, to Megan first regarding the horses. I would not feel any pressure and do not bring the horses. There may be anticipation and people want to see it happen and everything, but I wouldn't bring the horses onto the property until you're absolutely comfortable that it's the proper thing to do because they are large animals. We're responsible for them. The other thing, Greg, I wanted to ask you, is the science labs, are they finished?
Science labs are finished. They are.
Are they being, are they being used?
Yeah, they're being used. They've been, people have moved in. I mean, the classes have moved in. They've got glassware, they've got all the stuff in there. I mean, there's, I, I think there may be one or two locks in cabinet doors that are not here yet. But, but other than that, they're, they're 100% finished. They're, they're ready to go and they're, and they're being used.
I'd love to see them, thank you.
Oh. All right, we're going to have to, we're going to have to schedule a tour for perhaps our next meeting.
Microphone.
Microphone, Alex.
We have to get bodies up here. I don't know, you know, free ice cream, anything to get people to come up.
Well, we, I, I think we have, I think we wanted to get, we wanted to get the public up for tours, but we kind of wanted to wait until we were just a little bit more finished. And I mean, I, I can't in good conscience allow anyone to tour building F without a hard hat until it's.
No, no, I don't mean tomorrow.
Until it's absolutely finished. But, and I think we were kind of waiting for this. I think the idea of the, of the, of the big grand opening in the spring was to wait until we had a little bit of green and we're in the position of planting on the fields and whatnot, so we're not looking at dirt. Because that, that just won't, that won't be good. And right over, it's a little bit rough around F building right now. And I'd like to have, I'd really like to have horses on the property at that point, if at all possible. Yes.
Well, by any means, I'm not saying April's great, but I always think of April as a little mucky. And I would maybe a better time to, because it's a little greener. But April's fine too. I'm just, it's great.
I'm going to say lovingly, people want to have the ribbon cutting. One of the reasons waiting to April is that we've got to wait for the asphalt plant to open so that way all the walkways are done. But I do feel personally the public pressure for people to see it.
Yeah, I understand that. No, 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 I understand.
And so I think the more we hold people at bay and then we start getting into graduation. But I respectfully understand what you're saying.
But I also just was thinking too, Alex is actually on to something because I think it would be great to have tours and have a food truck or something up here to encourage on a really beautiful couple of weekends in May.
We can do more than one, is what I'm going to say to you.
Because I know that when you, when there were the tour, the tours a couple, was it last month? I was in the depot and there were a lot of people coming up here very excited about seeing it. And so I think it would be a great opportunity to really make it.
And, and I think what you bring up is, just because we're going to do a grand opening, that's not the only grand thing that's going to happen. And so I think the more that we can get other things, other events, you know, even if we start talking about a back-to-school picnic for next year, getting people up to Shapog, these are the things in which we have so much to show off and we are dying to let people know that.
Michael?
I was almost thinking of, you know, maybe this is a conversation for long-range planning in terms of brainstorming because I think you're right. I, I think it's not just one big event. Those are, those are fabulous, but, you know, you can only have so many ribbon-cutting ceremonies anyway. But maybe a calendar so that you can, you can identify one, one event per month. Maybe that sounds overly ambitious, but not every one. I mean, it could be like a fall festival, something that big. But it could also be a pumpkin picking patch that we invite, you know, area residents to come that the Ag Science kids have in the fall. And we could do that in October, November, you know, whenever, whenever it works. I mean, the big or small events, I think, would get us the publicity that we'd want and get more members of the community on campus.
Okay, Jen?
Just to piggyback off of that, of course, I'm brainstorming. But I also think it's really important to have reasons for people to come up to look on the weekends because we have a lot of people who don't live here full-time. But it's a great opportunity to entice them to look around because I know a lot of people who do live here part-time and have young children are always looking. So I think having an opportunity to have ice cream or food trucks or something so that they come look at the animals. Weekenders in particular with young children are always looking for things to do locally. And I think it would be a great opportunity to highlight what we have here.
Okay, Mary.
Whenever we can get the date, as soon as you can, please get it to me and I will make sure that Johanna gets it. And, well, we want her. She's such a great speaker that everybody, I, I think she'll be excited because she's on the Education Committee and she's also on the Agriculture Committee. And I think this is very exciting for her to be able to help us open the school officially. So I, so I, you know, I want to do that. And the other thing I thought of is maybe we could have some of the kids make some of the, the things that we're going to serve that day in our kitchen. That might be something that people can look at and go, oh, look at that, look what they can do.
Okay, all great ideas. But no, we do plan to have people up here. I, I think I'm a little bit less enthusiastic earlier in the spring and more enthusiastic as the spring moves on. Just because it'd be nice, it'd be nice to have green lawns and, and leaves on. and, and leaves on trees, which you really don't get until the very end of April, so. But I think it's, I think the school will show well, and the other thing, the other thing is, you'll, you'll be able, you'll be able to, you'll be able to see, you know, I think, how it lays out now that a lot of the fences are in, it'll look a lot nicer and whatnot. So if there are no further questions on building status, I'd like to move on to financial status. Nicole?
So I don't have a regular financial update because we haven't approved any payments since our last meeting. We do have one on our upcoming finance committee meeting, or, I'm sorry, building committee meeting, so I will share those details with you after that meeting. We have not received any payments from the state, so we're status quo since my last financial update regarding agri-science. And I know that Greg is watching the shrinking contingency.
Yes, we're wa, we're watching that carefully. Okay. Yes, Jim?
Nicole, was Greg accurate when he said we're below budget?
We are still under budget currently, yes.
Under budget.
It's getting closer, but we're under budget.
The gap is closing.
I'm going to move on to new item number six, disposal donation of old equipment.
So year after year, our technology, as you know, it times out and we try to stay current with making certain our students have new Chromebooks, and those are things that we always put into our budget. That said, we always have items to recycle, and in the past, we had a recycling company who'd come out and take the equipment. And when we're looking at some of the donations where I'm looking at 24 PCs, 20 IMACs, six MacBooks, 125 Chromebooks that are obsolete for us, but are not obsolete pieces of equipment, we are looking to work with a donation to a less affluent school, so potentially charter school or something that we know they can be repurposed and reused. So just one where I think it's good to know that, I don't want us to feel wasteful, I think we have the ability to, instead of just recycling it where it goes off to some tech place that we don't even get money back from to actually utilize them. That said, all the hard drives would be pulled, we would do all the things to make certain that data is kept private, but it's one that when we do these things, sometimes we don't do them quietly. So I didn't want any surprises for the board when we see that some of these donations, it's because as these Chromebooks have lived their lives in Region 12, and just so you know, the way that it does happen is with when our sixth graders get new Chromebooks at that time, we take the old Chromebooks they had, we bring it to our second graders, they see two life cycles and then they're, they no longer can take some of the updates that we need for our smarter balanced testing. That's what I mean by when we say that they're no longer working for us, however, it may be something used for our community in need. So again, looking to create some of those partnerships, and that is something that I think we would look to get some publicity on, because I think it's great to show that we, we partner and look to give back. So I just didn't want to have any of those things happen without the board being aware.
Jim?
So that's a decision you'll make as to where these things are going?
That's correct.
Have you started it yet?
Started booking.
Have, no, no, have things been donated?
We have not started yet, so right now I have a, a list of our first donation in which I will get to the board.
That's fine.
But yep, that's what I'm looking to do.
Okay. All right, let's move on to action items. The first item is to consider, and if appropriate, to approve a senior class trip to Baltimore, Maryland and Washington DC on April 24 to 26, 2020. Moved, moved and seconded, further discussion? You may.
Kim Gallo presented about going to the Poconos last time, and what we found is it is cost restrictive for some of our seniors. So our senior class advisors actually went and found a different trip for our seniors that was more inclusive for all students. I have to absolutely applaud their effort. This is twice as much work to work with travel agents to get these things to, so at this time, it is to get them to Baltimore and Washington DC. All of the activities they have are about bonding and getting the kids together, whether it's going to Ripley's Believe It or Not, and some of those really fun activities. So it is something I'm supporting, but I did want you to know, we're not sending them to two places. This is, instead of the Poconos.
No danger of harsh handcuffs.
Thank you. Nope, instead we push cart.
Although I'm going to say, since you, since you did do this, and you're doing this in April, you have missed, you're going to Baltimore, you have missed Edgar Allan Poe's birthday, which is in January, and every year since his death, someone has left a rose on his grave and no one quite knows who it is. And it's continued every year. Cool thing.
Very cool thing.
All right. One of the many things to do in Baltimore. Moved and seconded, is there further discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Staining? It's unanimous. Next action item to consider, and if appropriate, approve the 2020 to, I think that's 2021.
I wasn't that ambitious.
2020 to 20,210 school calendar. Boy, that's a long year.
It may feel like that.
What's 18,000 years between friends? There you go.
The calendar was put into the board packet, the thing that I do want to know, so it puts the start of school on August 26th, which would have us ending school on June 11th for next year. Other things, we did contact all of the, those towns that have already approved their calendars at this time. We can tell you April vacation is aligned, but it, as far as there are no surprises, this is just the calendar as it aligns with other districts in our areas and regional calendars.
Jim? All right, moved and seconded. I just have one quick question. Are, are the start dates and stop dates somewhat aligned with our sending schools?
We have 183 days. Our sending schools have 180. So I can tell you that for some of them, we start a little early, some of them we end a little later. So that's the variances, but I can tell you, we are close between those two. Good question, thank you.
All right. Further discussion? All is in favor? Opposed? Staining? That is unanimous. Item number three, to consider, and if appropriate, approve the replacement of tennis courts using the 2018-19 funds encumbered under the quotes obtained. Is there a presentation on this? Don, are you going to say something about this, or no? Well, I, I know there were a couple of options, and the question is, which one are we going to undertake?
Well, the microphone has no, there's no speakers. Both of which are post-tensioned concrete. The prices range from 270,000 to 300,000 dollars. And that would pull out the existing fencing, regrade the existing asphalt, line it up, reuse it for a base, and then put tenures of post-tensioned concrete for the courts on top of the existing, or in the existing location. Put the fences back up, resurface the courts, reline them, and put up the new nets. Both of the companies are in an area, one's Woodbury and the other's Oxford. Both of these companies are a nationalized company. We would probably have to build this work out. These courts, both of them had an application, they're 60 days, they'd be using for 60 days. So I suspect there may be some slight increases at this point.
Jim?
Is one of the two companies the ones who built the tennis courts?
I don't know who built it, but one of them is RNS Sports and the other is Classic Turf.
Okay, I'm not sure. And so if this were to be done, when would you suggest that it be done?
It would take an entire summer to do this work.
So when would you, right after school gets out?
As a matter of fact, I believe if you want to use this year's or last year's funds, you need to have a shovel in the ground or a contract before the 1st of July and a shovel in the ground, from what I understand.
These are prepared to go to contract as far as you're?
Well, needs to be bid.
I am not prepared to-
Has to be bid, all right, yep.
We've been sitting on these numbers and talking about them in various facility committee meetings, and the money's just now been proposed, and so I pulled these out and dusted them off for us.
Well, one of the, one of the things that we did look at when I was on facilities is we looked at the difference between post-tensioned concrete and what we have now, which is an asphalt court. And the problem with the asphalt court is it requires continual maintenance every year, and the time of the maintenance always coincides with the worst possible time for the tennis team. So it becomes kind of a pain in the neck, and then you have to defer the maintenance, then the court gets all cracked up and they're not happy with it. And if you try to do the maintenance before the season, you can't quite make it between the weather and whatnot. So we, I know we found it was a really difficult thing to do, and post-tensioned concrete seemed like the solution, because those courts go for at least 20 years without any maintenance necessary, you know, to, to do it. So we, we kind of felt that even though it was a little more expensive, it, it made a lot more sense in terms of the use and in terms of being available for the tennis teams in the condition they needed to play on it every year, not just occasionally.
That is correct. They are, one of the, one of the proposals does indicate it's a 20-year warranty. Yes, right. And you're correct. Even, even a brand-new asphalt court, there's no guarantees that it won't last five years. There's, there's not. And with the ground around here, heaving and contracting, it's just, it's cracking the courts constantly.
Whereas the post-tension is isolated from that. So it, the post-tensioned concrete courts are isolated from that.
That is the purpose for the post-tensioning, yes. There's stainless steel rods and wires that are pulled the entire length of the courts, and then they crank a torque on either end of them to, to pull them together and hold them as they, as they cure, and that's what gives, gives us its life expectancy. Yes, sir.
Don, since I'm, I'm not as familiar with the footprint of the, I know that the, near the parking lots used to be where the tennis courts are. Have they been totally moved, same area roughly, just shifted slightly?
Same spot.
Okay.
We have not moved them. They, the new ones would be placed right in the exact same spot they are now.
And then other than the improvements that you were just talking about with Greg, is any other improvements to the tennis courts at all in terms of the number of tennis courts or the quality of the courts themselves?
Well, the, the numbers would be the same, the quality would, well, I guess it depends on if you play tennis or not, there's so many-
You have new courts.
...types. But this, this would be the, this would be a core system in which you can guarantee you would get 20 years of life expectancy out. And then potentially be able to resurface and refurbish it beyond that, as opposed to what we have today. One of the problems with what we have today is we've learned through our agri-science project that many or none of the existing walkways, driveways, don't have any base materials below that. And I assume that the tennis court is the same. One of these companies typically puts post-tension on top of the existing asphalt court. But this court, or these courts, are so varying in their surface and their pitch that they require them to be ground up and start with a fresh grade and build it from there up, to get the warranty that they're stating.
Well, one other good point of the post-tension is that you're going to end up with actually a slightly smaller area devoted to the tennis courts, or are you going to, or is it going to end up being the same? Because it's oversized, there's too much area inside the fence.
At this point, I've priced them their existing size. I didn't want to make the decision to make them smaller. That's something that you can, or we could ask in terms of a price when we go out to bid, we could ask that it be the normal size. There's 16 feet beyond the front, between the fence and the first line of the tennis courts, and I think typically it, it can be eight or thereabout. It, it doesn't need to be as big as it is. We can, we can ask that of any bidders that, that we ask to bid the price of the courts.
Okay. Further questions? Oh, yes. Lisa.
Are the courts playable right now, or what will the team do this year?
The answer is yes. Are they problematic? There are some cracks in them.
Okay.
I attempted to fix them in the fall, but none of the companies would touch that. The athletic department was trying to encourage me to get it done early, but the, the weather, the expansion and contraction, and them being as bad as they are, nobody would touch them.
Okay.
They, they would, they tended to say it was a waste of our money. Greg is right. Repairs to the courts, whether they put in an elastic material or rubberized material, require a 60-degree temperature for a prolonged time.
Yeah.
And by the time we have that nights and days, the tennis season-
Right, right.
-is well into their season.
So what will we do for our teams?
It becomes a difficult decision.
Well, what, what we're going to do is they're going to have to make do with as best as they can with what we have, because we can't really do much about it. And then, and then once the summer starts, that court will, those courts will be just, you know, taken down and replaced, so that in the future, and we won't have this problem every year of, because if Don were to fix it in the fall, even if he were to fix it in the fall, by the time they got to the spring, you're going to have freeze thaw, crack-
I know.
And it's going to be back where they were. And that's the problem.
We did the previous sprint, we did last sprint, it was back upward, and I, don't call me, but it was around $3,000 or $3,200.
So, yeah. So are we working with, like, is Mr. Parachi working with other schools? Because we can't really host any matches here on our existing court. Maybe we can, but they're not in great shape. So I'm just wondering what our plan is, because it's right around the corner.
He is aware of it, and we have communicated our need to, if you do select this and we do move forward, that he'll need to move some of those matches, that's up to him.
I think the most important thing is, is once that, once he gets through this next spring tennis season, he's going to be the happiest athletic director around, because he's not going to have this problem anymore. The other thing I'd point out, Don, didn't you tell me that most schools are now going to pre-tensioned concrete?
Oh, yes, yes. Region 10 went, Britain went, Bristol Central went, I drive by that one every day, and I watch them do that, not last summer, the summer before. Yeah, many of them are going that way, to get the long-term management.
Mary?
I believe that in the past, we used tennis courts at Washington primary.
Microphone, please.
In the past, I know we've used the, the tennis courts at Washington Primary School. I don't, I don't play tennis, so I don't know what kind of shape they're in, but that might be, using the tennis courts there might be something we're able to do.
We have recently been refurbished, but it's a different type of a court now. They went to a turf-style court with a sand, like, like an AstroTurf, with sand distributed between the turf. It's pretty interesting. I haven't talked to them, maybe somebody else here knows more about it.
But just along that, that same idea, maybe we could talk to Roxbury and Bridgewater. I mean, I know that Bridgewater has, it's a little bit further, but beautiful courts in the town park that would be available.
Yeah, I, I think the prob, the problem generally is, is I think for what the type of use they have, for like, not necessarily a tournament, but the, the type of play that they have generally requires four courts. And they're, in Roxbury, for example, has tennis courts, but only has two.
Yeah.
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 Yeah, so, yeah, so I think in each case, the towns are just short of a full deck here for a-
To be honest with you, the athletic department here would like to have six. And there's something to do with the JVs and the- And there's something to do with the JVs and the seniors playing, and the girls and the boys and.
Well, if people are feeling generous and we can find a place to put it, it'd only be about $450,000 instead of $300,000. John?
Yeah, I'm going to vote to support this. It's very obvious that the existing asphalt won't last another 20 years, and even if it did, the maintenance on it is probably going to equal a third of what the cost of the new concrete courts will be. In addition, when we discussed this in the facilities, the fencing is all, is it rotting or broken, breaking down, correct?
It's of age. I asked both of these companies if it could be rolled up and saved and reused. They thought that the fencing material itself, maybe, they've got to look a little closer. The poles cannot. We would ask that it would come with wind screening also. That's the part that we're having issues with and or have had issues because we've never had a real wind stream up there. We've had donated screens that we put up there at various times, whether they be from a senior project or there were people locally donated all their screens. Mr. Parachi came to me sometime during the early part of the, the beginning of the winter, and he said something about the gunner he had done theirs and was willing to donate their screens. I haven't seen them yet, and I don't know whether they'd be useful for our purposes once we're done.
Just a follow-up, just a follow-up, too. The public uses these courts on weekends?
The public uses.
And during the day, too? Yeah, okay.
Go ahead, Jim.
Just a discussion, is there going to be a discussion about the funds encumbered? Where's the money coming from?
Well, the call, the call, either, I'm not sure if you did it or Bob, but somebody encumbered the funds. They're sitting there wa, waiting for us to use them.
Why don't you let, yeah, go ahead.
Don and I started talking about the tennis courts in March, a few months after I started. And we talked about the need to have them done, thought about possibly having them done this past year, but because of the site work, it's not something we could bring someone in to do. So we, he had already gotten the quotes, and we had money in the operating budget. So the funds have been encumbered, using funds from the 1819 budget, which is why we need to spend them before June 30th.
How much, how much is encumbered?
$280,000.
So the money's there. I think it's just a question of making sure that we get it bid and get the contracts entered into before June 30th, and so that's, that's the only trick. But we should have plenty of time, I would think. Mary? Okay, Mike?
Don's talking about six instead of four.
No, 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 no. There are four, and we'll replace them with four. The athletic department would like to have six.
Why not do?
But we have more, we have extra room there.
You don't have enough money now.
Not a lot. And we haven't set aside enough money for six. It costs more. At one point in the AgSTEM project, we looked at removing the tennis courts from their present location up to the northeast end of the site, but that just became too expensive. So we didn't do it.
Yeah. We value engineered it.
Got value engineered right out of the project, so, yeah.
As I remember, my daughter played tennis in high school. You have three singles matches, and I think it's one doubles match. So I think you really only need four courts.
No, I think he wants six in order to accommodate the people for practice and whatever else. So I.
They may do with four.
Yeah, six would be nice, but four they could live with.
I think four is it.
Jim?
I make the motion to approve the replacement of the tennis courts as, you know, to be coordinated with Don and proper people, using the 2018-2019 funds encumbered.
Yeah, actually, Jim, what you may want to say on this is, instead of moving to replace them, what you may say is you want to move to have it bid or whatever, because don't we have to bid it before we can approve anything? You need to see the bid before we say yes.
All right, well, I'm just reading from the.
Don, what are you, are you thinking something different?
I would agree.
Nicole?
Although, no, I would agree, yeah.
Well.
The approval we need is to keep the funds encumbered and to move forward with the process of replacing them.
All right, so I think the motion then would be to keep the funds encumbered and move forward with the process of bidding out the replacement tennis courts.
So moved.
Okay, is there a second? Moved and seconded, further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstaining? Motion carries. Number four, to consider, and if appropriate, approve the transfer of certain district bank accounts to National Iron Bank. Nicole?
Just before the meeting, I passed out a list of some of our smaller bank accounts, which are currently held at Union Savings Bank. We have, Megan and I have met with National Iron Bank quite a few times to talk to them about taking over these accounts from Union Savings Bank. So we would like your permission to move those accounts. Some of the things that National Iron Bank is offering us that Union Savings Bank is not is no fees, comparable or better interest rates in conjunction with no fees. They have a program whereby our deposits, even though they exceed FDIC amounts, will be fully insured. I included in your online board packet information about that program. I also gave you their financial statement so that you can see that they are a financially sound institution. They can offer us door-to-door service, which is something I'm really interested in getting for our schools because the accounts that we're moving, some of these accounts are maintained at each of the individual schools, and school personnel has to bundle deposits and drive to Union Savings Bank, whether it be in Roxbury or Depot, to make cash deposits, and that would alleviate the need for our staff to do that because the National Iron Bank has committed to making a once or twice per week, depending on our need, pickup of our deposits and processing them for us, which is a great service that small banks used to offer, and you don't find that very often. And then I think one of the main draws of moving them is to keep our bank accounts in the community with a community bank because they do do a lot for our community.
So moved.
So it's been moved, is there a second?
Second.
Now, can I ask you one question? You mentioned that our deposits exceed the FDIC. Listen, how do they insure, how do they provide secondary insurance for that?
So it's explained much more eloquently than I can explain it in the handout that's in your board packet.
No, but it won't come up on my screen.
Essentially, what they're doing is they enter into, several small banks gather together, and they enter into what are called swap agreements. Are you familiar with swap agreements? So they're moving all of their bundled accounts in swap agreements every night so that there's never more funds for one depositor at each of the banks than the FDIC can insure. And it's specifically a program offered to government and municipalities. So you can't move your money, Greg.
Only bankers can come up with that dodge, but that's wonderful. Thank you. Mike? Nicole, you had down that the fees are significantly better at National Iron. Is what, what, what kind of savings would we be looking at there?
So the fees at Union Savings Bank are really driven by the amounts that we keep our balances. So on some of our larger accounts, for instance, our restricted grant account, we really don't realize any fees from Union Savings Bank because our deposits are enough to offset them. But on our smaller accounts, it was the majority of, there are student activity accounts and our student scholarship accounts. Those fees range anywhere between $30 and $150 a month, depending on the volume that's moving through the accounts.
That's quite a bit. I mean, have you, have you totaled up what those fees would cost per year?
We do, we analyze each account separately. I think the account that had the most fees last year at Union was, after some different credits back and forth for interest rates, I think the highest fee that we paid to Union Savings Bank last year was 875 for the year on one of our accounts.
That's a lot. I mean, some of these accounts, I'm looking at them, you know, if it's a $5,000 account, that's, that's a significant chunk.
The smaller accounts are the accounts that have less fees attached. It's the bigger accounts that have more fees attached.
Right, yeah. The last question I had is, you mentioned at the very end that we'd be banking in our own community with a bank that supports our community. I know, correct me if I'm wrong, but doesn't Union have a branch in Roxbury?
And Washington Depot.
And Washington?
Yeah.
So we'd be just moving from one community bank to a diff, to a smaller community bank?
Yeah, and I think when, when Steve Cornell, who's at National Iron Bank, came to pitch to us that, you know, he can offer us these services, he offered a long list of things that they've specifically done within our community just in the last year, and it seems that they, to me, from what I've seen, they are more active. Union Savings Bank is not as active in our communities.
Right.
With National Iron Bank, there's, there's three branches, Cornwall, Kent, and Salisbury. With Union Savings Bank, they're more of a regional bank.
Regional Danbury area, yeah.
They don't focus as much specifically on our community as National Iron does.
So it doesn't really, I mean, from the handout that you gave us, it doesn't really sound like there would be any downside at all to the shift.
I don't see a downside, I don't anticipate a downside. If I did, I wouldn't be recommending it.
Right.
Yeah.
Good. All right, it's been moved and seconded. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstaining? Motion carries. Accept a motion to go into executive session for the discussion of negotiation strategies and consideration of potential settlement for the Shippag Valley Educators Association Agreement, July 1, 2020 to June 30, 2023, with rat, with the ratification vote to take place in public session, should we decide to ratify it. Moved, is there a second?
Yes.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstaining? We are.
Do you want Nicole Grant to join us in executive session?
Yes, we would, and can we also, do we amend that motion to invite Nicole Grant and the superintendent to join us in executive session? I'm not sure we have to invite the superintendent, but we will anyway. All right? Okay, so that's, that's approved with that amendment. All right, we're in executive session.